Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Now that hereby given, Willis County Commissioners' Court will hold a special meeting at the county judge's office, Commissioner's forum at Price City Central Main Street in Rivelo, Texas, seven eight five eight zero thirty, October sixteenth, twenty twenty five, and nine AM for the purpose of discussing the following item. If during the course of the meeting any discussion of any item would be adjourned to be held in an executive closed session, Willis County Commissioners' Court will convene such executive closed session according to section five five one point oh, one of the Texas Department Code. So any final action, final decision, or final vote will be required in the opinion of Willis County Commissioners' Court with regards to any matter considering such close or executive meeting or session. Then the final decision or final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or the subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners' Court upon orders there offered the county to determine. So with that amount of public meeting to order, may I have your deputy clerk to establish a court, please?
Yes, sir. Commission precinct one.
Present.
Commission precinct two.
Present.
Commission precinct three.
Present.
Commission precinct four.
Present.
Our county judge.
Present. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We go line item number three. Any public comments? If none, we go to four, spread of the minute. Willis County precinct three, Commissioner Henry Alas. Earned eight additional hours to meet his commissioner statutory continuing education requirement for the period ending twelve thirty one of twenty twenty five. Let's spread of the minutes. Congratulations, Commissioner. Line item. If there's not any questions or comments, we'll go to line item number five. Discussion action to approve the purchase and payment upon invoice received for a twenty thirteen freightliner Coronado. Coronado, not ever.
Coronado.
Coronado SD dump truck VIN three eight KJGNBG five DDFG four seven four one from arts, trucks, and equipment to be paid from Roden Bridge Precinct to account number six three dash four hundred dash three eighty five. Action required.
Yes, sir, Judge. Put that on there. Uh, I got a recommendation also from precinct three, Commissioner Mina Posor. He bought his truck and I went over there and I was impressed with the type of quality and pricing that they have. And a few months ago, I transferred a, one of my, my older trucks to precinct one, Commissioner. Precinct one, and she was in need of a, uh, and I needed a bigger truck, so she was in need of a dump truck. So I helped her out. She, we transferred the monies and all that. And I really need this truck. Uh, this, we're so far away from, uh, the, the pit where the caliche is. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna store my caliche in San Pravita and then do my road repairs as I need it. You know, instead of waiting for, for the truck to bring me caliche. But, and I have my monies and my, and my budget, you know, we just started here, and that's why it's on here.
Okay. So, so bottom line is that you have the monies to purchase it?
Yes, I do. And it's really gonna help me out in, in my road repairs.
It actually is a big benefit because you just, you know, having the trailer.
Oh, like what you do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't have to wait for anybody to take you. You just haul it down yourself.
Yep. Stockpile.
Stockpile. And then, I mean, the times when we get meetings, they don't have to coordinate.
Oh, yeah. I can haul it myself.
I can haul it myself. Yep.
You know, if we're beneficial, we have a bigger dump trucks. I think we all, we all have some that will can help precinct one when they need it. But I, I had two of those, one recently purchased one. The only thing, uh, I was gonna ask, Commissioner, I guess, Carmen is good with this auditor?
Yes, yes. We reviewed, she reviewed it. Everything's, uh, uh, up to date and she was the one who recommended to go ahead and put on the agenda.
Yes, and they, I think this year, or in September one, the, uh, the allowable limits went up to a hundred thousand. Is that correct? To not have to go out for bids. So you were well within that.
Correct.
And, uh, there you go.
Um, that was the, uh, title. That's the correct accounts.
Oh. Oh, okay. Which one is it? We haven't made a motion yet, right?
Oh, it's sixty.
Yeah, account number, account number.
Instead of sixty three, it's sixty two. With somebody.
Oh, well, you made it like that.
No.
No. You didn't catch it?
No, no.
I didn't either.
I was waiting to see who was gonna be on this here.
Okay, so, uh, if I can't take a motion, obviously, we could correction.
Let me, let me read it out with the correction. Uh, make a motion to approve the purchase of a, and payment upon invoice received for a twenty thirteen freightliner Coronado SD dump truck with the VIN number as, as on the agenda item from arts, uh, trucks, and equipment to be paid from Roden Bridge Precinct two, account number sixty two four hundred three eighty five.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
So, I mean, a second.
And a second by Commissioner Alanis Morahan. Any more discussion on his favorite sign of the cabasena?
Aye.
And opposing, solid which carries. All right, here we go. Thank you. Six discussion action to open and score two bid for the solid waste transfer containers option required. Commissioners, as you know, this is a, this is a vital, uh, uh, agreement, uh, for, for everyone, right? And I know that you all are directly involved in your precincts, uh, and to the type of services that we get with solid waste, uh, services, containers, and so forth. Uh, so we did get two bids and, uh, and we haven't opened them. We're gonna open them here. However, I, I do want, before you, you have the, you have two forms, right? And so what we need to do is, uh, is to come up with, uh, consensus as to which one we wanna use. We can't use both. We gotta go with one or the other, right? And what I would like to do is just, uh, put the, put the, the one fourth that you, the one forward that you need, that you and your opinion wanna fail that we should use, and then we'll go with the majority. Very simple. All right, so we'll, we'll start with, uh, precinct one.
Is, is there a scoring sheet?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Is it in the packet?
Yes. That's what is written in check this week.
Melissa, do you believe?
They're in the packet.
Oh, they're in the packet. That, or something.
It's in the, it's in the.
My first instinct was to go with the simplest one, but after looking at it, I really don't know. Okay. Put it up here, just so we get precinct two.
Let's see. I just feel like that's important, separate to me. Yeah.
Precinct three?
Let's see this.
So we're choosing between one of these two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this one. This doesn't have, there's a, oh, there it is from the box. Yeah, this. Here's another one. This, this one, this is, it's S for sandbag. We don't, we're not gonna need all their.
Some of that will be, would be non-applicable?
Uh.
That's why there's, I noted that. I edited the form. And Judge Jimmy.
Only thing about this one, it does give it a point. It does give it room to write comments and, uh.
So, so, so do you, can you, just for the record, put on there who the two bids are from? The companies?
Oh, we're gonna get into that.
Oh, okay.
We're just getting the, the form.
Oh, okay.
It has nothing to do with the bids themselves.
Okay.
That, that's why I wanna do it before.
Oh, you're just kinda putting.
We don't even know what's in the bid.
Yeah, actually, this does look pretty good. What do you think?
Yeah, I'll go with this one. Okay.
Right, so we got three options.
Okay, so.
Give you directions.
Yeah.
It's gonna be records, uh, Willis County bid tabulation scoring sheet. Uh, I guess we call this one.
Okay, so that's what we make this. Now the bid.
Now, we need another form.
We'll, we'll, we'll need one for each vendor, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yes. So Melissa, we need copies and she'll provide you with, uh, two.
Oh, that includes.
All right.
Another time with it strength.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, I think, did I read the line item already?
No, I didn't.
Okay, number six. Discussion action to open and score two bid for the solid waste transfer containers. Action required. Uh, Commissioners, as you know, this is a, a line item that, that, uh, that's a, a, a big part of our budget, and, uh, this is one that I have Melissa look into as, as the times goes by, uh, throughout the year to, to see how we're doing, right? Uh, we have been able to stay within budget here in the, in the past, uh, few years. Uh, nonetheless, uh, it's up for renewal, or I should say it's up for bids again. And so there was two bids that came in. It was a two-week, uh, uh, is that two?
Two-week run in August and then in September.
Okay. And so, uh, this was the two that came in. Oh, they're right here. So this two, you know, the two packets that came in.
So Judge, do you need a motion to then open and, um, start the scoring?
I'm gonna see what the action is. Action to open and score.
You already read the agenda.
Yes, can, can I entertain a motion to open and score two bids with.
If, if you are, Judge, I would recommend that you, the motion be, uh, to move to open the two bids received for the solid waste transfer container and score using the Willis County County bid tabulation scoring sheet.
There you go.
So we.
Second.
Get that, Lizzie?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner that's here second by Commissioner. Good, so this one is Granby Dumpsters LLC. And it has, uh, I'm gonna tell you the, the, the three figures that are, actually there's four. Delivery, a hundred and five dollars for additional containers. Hall rate per container, two fifty nine point twenty-three, or two, two hundred fifty nine dollars twenty-three cents. Tonnage rate, thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents per ton. And automobile tires, ten dollars per tire, and then in parentheses, fee imposed by landfill. Okay, I think those are the three main figures. And then it goes into the, uh, uh, proof of liability insurance for, for that company. Okay, and I'm gonna go ahead and open the other one, which is Republic Services. Okay, it's within the timeframe. Okay, and this one, uh, it's three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents per haul plus fifty-nine dollars per ton. Okay, that's in precinct three.
Judge, who's that bid from?
Let me read it again. Quantity, not precinct three. Quantity. Three for three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents per haul. Just saying, I guess, they'll do three. Plus fifty-nine dollars per ton. That's in precinct one. And then precinct five. Uh, quantity, three, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents per haul plus fifty-nine dollars per ton. Precinct two. For two, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents per haul plus fifty-nine dollars per ton. In precinct three, for three, three hundred and thirty-four dollars per haul plus fifty-nine dollars per ton. Precinct four, for five, three hundred and one dollars and forty cents per haul plus fifty-nine dollars per ton.
So all the tonnage is the same?
The tonnage is the same. It's just, I think, the, the math has to be the, the, the number of, of times. It says quantity.
So, do we have a tabular?
Yeah, we need a tabular.
Listen, how many was precinct three?
Precinct two against three.
Do you have four or something?
Yes.
I don't know, but I used to know. So we can start with you?
Yes.
That's it.
Sir, you want me to make copies of that for you? So which one of them can have it, making.
Yes, I think that's probably a good idea.
Let me make.
And on this one, the other one.
Let me make copies for you. Let me go ahead and make copies.
So Grande provided solid one of these or?
Not just three.
The tabulation sheet, Judge?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't coincide with what we want to do. You know, I mean, if you look at the minimum, minimum qualifications, has experience with federal funded programs, projects. Active member of Sandbag, like you mentioned.
Well, some of these are gonna be non, oh, she left, non-applicable?
Yeah, it says, but in a, most of these are.
Yeah, except for the.
This is the federal.
Yeah, just the project description is available upon request, project within budget constraints. I think we can, we can go with that. The only, one of the questions I have is, it says here under the fees, which is what we're looking at, and of course service, right? It says delivery a hundred and five dollars for additional containers. And then it says haul rate per container, two fifty-nine twenty-three. So does that mean that each, each additional, you have to add that one oh five and the two fifty-nine, or is it just two fifty-nine?
I, I think.
Or unless, if you want an additional one.
Yeah, if you want additional one, they're gonna bring you one for a hundred and five.
Okay. So then, um, and tires, we don't normally bring tires. They don't normally take our tires. I, I didn't know that that was an option.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. We normally take. First to it as, that's fee, right?
Yes. Melissa, also, question. We have somebody, I believe, here from Grande Ways? No?
Yes.
Can we ask him questions here?
And it's based off of what the bid is.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause what was submitted, what's on the paperwork. Uh, and so the way you would do the sheet is, so it says qualifications. If it wasn't in the qualifications, then you don't score it off of that. So like, if, if it wasn't, if you didn't require, like, uh, information, for example, on, uh, references, then you don't take points away or give points if they just, you know, give it or, you know, it's, you don't, you don't score it on that. It's just, you look at what you put, posted on the notice and you score it based off of what the notice was and what the bid has. Because that's what you asked for, like, give us information on that.
Yeah.
This one, just, just two of the, just the front page, it says. Okay, just to clarify, right, on, on the, I'm gonna make sure that I'm reading this correctly. On the Republic, the quantity is just merely the number of containers that, that are in each precinct, right?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with the figure there.
The price per each.
The price per each regardless.
Yeah.
Regardless if it's five or two or one.
Yeah.
Okay, but what I, what I see there, okay, and the, and the reason for the difference in the price, uh, per haul is because of the distance.
Yes, yeah.
I got it. And on, on the other one, it's a flat rate regardless, right?
Right.
Per haul. Okay, I got it now.
So I guess we need to figure out our own precinct. Cause we're kinda jumping from one to another. We're on, we're on the other one right now. We're on, we're on the Grande right now.
If you notice, on the, on the Grand Dumpsters, under number two, it says service provided. Under two A, twelve thirty cubic yard roll-off containers at no rental cost. Additional thirty cubic yard metal containers will be provided by the contractor on an ASME basis at no rental cost to the county. So we're looking at, as a county, for all four precincts, sixteen containers, and here it specifies twelve. And on the bottom, under C, under fees, additional containers will be a hundred and five to deliver. So is that gonna be?
Just to bring them.
Additional, but it says it contradicts itself. It says no rental cost. Metal containers will be provided by the contractor on an ASME basis at no rental cost to the county. But yet if we need additional ones, it will be a hundred and five, because this is specifying twelve.
So the twelve.
We need sixteen.
The twelve that are, that are there right now are owned by the county, correct? No. We don't own all those containers?
No.
I, I mean, the ones I have, I think there's one that, that's owned by the county.
Yeah, those, those are not, yeah, they're so, those are not owned by the county.
What about yours, buddy? What do they say? Willis County?
Well, do, excuse me, do we still have county-owned containers rotating?
Can I?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Good morning.
Just answer the question.
Yeah, just answer that question. That could make a presentation.
Forum like this.
Yeah.
You can answer that question.
Okay.
Is, uh, if any of those are county-owned.
I don't think so. They're, I believe they all belong to Grand Dumpsters.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, no, I was asked to repair a couple of them during the year, cause they had a couple of holes in them and, and I pulled it over to the shop. I mean, it's only fifty feet away and we did some welding to it and stuff, cause the driver said, well, those are y'all's. I mean, y'all need to. That's why I was asking.
Mm-hmm.
And this was recent?
Uh, with, uh, within the, this past year.
Okay. Yeah. So, so would you say, uh, bottom of that, as of now, there isn't any more, uh, containers of Willis County? Or you're not sure?
No, there isn't.
There isn't?
We, a lot of the containers were damaged. We've been doing provided service for the county since two thousand and eight, I believe. And so the containers that were owned by the county, they started to deteriorate.
Right.
And we were just putting in our containers there, so.
So, I have five right here, trucks, real time, and they're all Grande Ways. I have seen on occasion one that says Willis County, but not, not, not currently. I have seen on occasion one that says, what's the county, but not, not, not currently, so they're all five in Grande. And, uh, so I'm guessing what it looks like, to do the math on it, uh, you said there was twelve, right, according to the contract? So that's a even numbers, that would mean that everybody would get, how many do we have on the ground right now?
Only have two, I've only, always had two.
Two?
I used to have to be, they removed one, I only have two now.
So that's five, I have five, that's ten.
I have three, and one for metal.
Okay, so that's gonna be a total of thirteen. Alright?
I wasn't keeping count.
But I will need.
Fourteens.
I will need.
You have three, two, five is ten, and four.
One.
Fourteen.
Well, you have, one's a metal container.
January. Because we wouldn't increase.
I guess what we need to figure out, and I don't know if this is the scope here, but, you know, and you've brought up a very valid point, there's contract says twelve thirty-yard roll-off containers at no cost, so it looks like we're being charged for maybe two more?
So you can ask that question, to clarify it, you can ask that question.
Do you, do you know how many containers you have in Willishe County right now?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so fifteen containers, I'm sorry.
No, uh, I I'm just, I guess the, 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 the throwing, the number that's throwing us off is, is when you say additional deliveries one oh five, is that like, like, I mean, I know I've talked to you plenty of times and I, uh, I said, hey, you know, and I'm gonna need a, uh, one for the Willishe County livestock show, livestock grounds, right? Uh, that's additional, that's, that's, that's additional delivery.
Yes.
However, if I call you and I say, hey, my dumpster is full, there's no a hundred and five delivery.
No.
Right, okay, so the regular.
So that's, so if we want an extra one, put right here on the, on the, on the county grounds, it's gonna be a hundred and five delivery charge.
Yes.
And then, would, would that go into like the haul rate after we haul it off?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're just talking about delivery, like a special delivery, but if you need anything for the precincts, where we already have containers, there won't be any additional fees, it's just additional for cleanup jobs, or I know that we've done some tire recycling jobs before, uh, I know that I brought like through four every year. So that would be separately, especially because we have to take it all the way to Brownsville, is that's normally the case.
So, so right now, we're gonna, we're, we're, we have fifteen?
Yes.
Uh, are we being charged for that?
Have sixteen, that's what we're going for, right?
Cause you're missing one.
Yes.
You took it away months, a few months ago.
I got removed, a container.
We can deliver another one, but what we're doing there, I know that you only have two, but what we're doing is we're making sure that we're replacing them often, so you don't have an issue with those containers being overflowed, so I'm gonna interrupt a little bit.
Overflowing, I do. So I'm gonna interrupt a little bit, because we're, we're going off topic of current contract versus the bid that we're talking about, so uh, right now, we're, we've, we've overlapped a little bit about, cause right now, there's the current contract, and that's what we're, what we're talking about, so.
Okay.
Uh, we need to go back to, to the, you know, but, but, but you do bring a point up. Discrepancy, because we're, you know, this agreement that they've provided is for twelve, and we're seeking for sixteen containers, so that's.
Did we specify that in the bid though? But the thing is, is that, is, is there, if it's just for twelve, so every additional one is gonna be?
Precinct three asks for, precinct one asks for three containers.
Okay.
And precinct in the bid asks, uh, precinct two asks for, uh,
Two.
It says two.
Precinct one has six.
And precinct three asks for three, and precinct four asks for five? I think, that's what it says?
Yes.
Let me see, is that how I'm reading it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so that's five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, thirteen, total of thirteen.
Well, actually, precinct one is three, and precinct five will be, is three, on, on the very first page.
Where's the precinct?
It's got precinct one, three, precinct five, three. There's three in precinct one barn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that right here.
So that's the actual one.
One and five, yes, you're right, I was only reading this one here, three and three, you're right, six. So you're asking for five?
Where, where was that, is that on here?
You're right, it's on here, quantity.
We have inch with a side cap.
I just read here across precinct one, I didn't read across here precinct five. So the first column says quantity, on the bid sheet. And so the bid sheet is for a total of sixteen, not twelve.
Correct. Is that the bid?
Yes. That's the bid sheet, that, that was, that's the bid sheet, the invitation to bid was to bid on sixteen.
I'm sorry if I remember seeing that.
Okay, I'm looking at, uh, I know, Mr. Nolson, I should go back there. Yeah, we're waiting for, uh, what is it?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, and this bid is for twelve, which is, the previous bid was back in twenty fifty.
And that's the current contract, right?
Yeah. Okay, so Mr. Nolson, no, that's a.
This is a Republic bid.
This is our package.
It's a, it's right behind your agenda item, item request, it's your, the invitation of it. It has Willishe County Texas invitation for bid, solid waste transfer station.
That's what was provided upon request.
Okay, Mr. Nolson, I guess a legal question. So based on the, uh, invitation for bids, right? I don't, I don't know what, what that instills or carries, right? But it being that the request for bid was for sixteen, and it being that bid at least on one of the companies, which is, uh, Valley Grande, is for twelve, would that disqualify them?
Not necessarily, there's, uh, it's, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily a disqualification, if there's, uh, if there's language in there on additional, how to get additional, uh, you know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So I mean, there's, there's language included in there.
I see.
Uh, you know, it's just like, you know, maybe that's like a minimum of twelve, but we can always add more. I mean, that's not, that's not necessarily a, a disqualification, uh, even though the bid came in for twelve, there's, there's language in there for like the additional four, so then how much is the additional four?
You can negotiate, you can negotiate.
But, uh, I mean, the bid is for twelve, and then you do need to figure out like how much would that additional four be, based off of what that bid is, not, uh, not knowing now what the, what the, what the bid is out of Republic, it would have to be based off of what is already in, see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can't negotiate right now, because you already know what Republic's bid is, yeah, it would have to be based off of what, what that came in as.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm familiar with our guidelines, which is the most stringent, and that is why within the committee and Commissioner Garcia's here, and so is Commissioner O'Neal's. And during the open bid, this is a time to negotiate, however, I'm not familiar with the way that the county has conducted business with local funding, but with the most stringent, you can't, I'm not, and, and I would agree with that, if the bids were equal.
But we're, here we're talking about unequal bids, because one is not.
Yeah, I, I understand, but let me, let, let me ask, uh, let me ask, uh, Valley Grande, uh, representatives questions, and you stop, Mr. Nolson, if I'm going above and beyond, okay, so in order to, for, for me to calculate numbers on the hundred and five dollars per additional container, right? Okay, so it's a hundred and five per additional, and then the hauling would stay at two fifty-nine per inch? And the tonnage would stay at three fif, three, thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents per ton. So for the additional, uh, four, it'd be a hundred and five dollars.
And more, you're under, we have fifteen containers currently at the precincts.
Yeah.
We used to have sixteen, because we had three in La Sara.
Right.
And we had to pick that one up, but we, for years, for many years, we had sixteen containers. I don't know why I put in twelve, but we do currently have fifteen.
And, and.
They're already, they're already there.
But we're talking about the bid that you turned in, so that's why we're, we're, we're looking at twelve.
Yes, and, and, and that, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, to calculate like, like, as you know, who says, I, we can't negotiate at this point, right? But I'm trying to, the, the good thing is that we can still consider it because of what you put in there about the additional containers, otherwise we wouldn't be even able to go forward with it. I understand you're basing it, and, and I don't wanna put worth in your mouth, but the agreement we had before in two thousand fifteen was for twelve. So I'm not saying that's why you did it, but nonetheless, I'll stop there, regardless of why you did it, right, I think we need to calculate numbers and see, uh, where we're at with, uh, with, with the numbers, in, in comparison, right?
But I do have to mention that our bid was, our, our invitation for bid was for sixteen containers.
Right.
Not fifteen, sixteen, and that's what the county is asking for. And I, my thing is, you know, it shouldn't be on the recommendation of the company. We're seeking, uh, for sixteen containers, you know, to be picked up and emptied, and not fifteen.
And they, they are, um, giving us a price for that.
For those, yes.
For, for those, so.
Yeah, and that's where your scoring comes in, is, is, was it, was it within, was the, the quote, the bid description, like essentially sufficient?
Right, because if you put.
She's looking at four hundred and forty dollars.
Sixteen, not twelve.
It's a three sixty-four, on the addition.
For the fortune. But then you go to the dollar amount at the end of the year. And the tonnage difference and the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you're right, that, that.
Yeah, the tonnage plays a big role.
The tonnage.
Yes, plays the biggest role. Yeah, at the end of the year, what's gonna be your bottom line of dollars that you either save or not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I always had that number of tonnage that was paid per year, but.
You're right.
That's for example.
I guess just the, 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 one of the biggest things right now, I understand the fifteen, sixteen unit or, or the case of the P, but what's on front, we, we still see that, uh, the tonnage, not the tonnage, but the per container basis is still significantly lower than the other, even if we add a, a sixteen container, we're still, you know, because I mean, the, I mean, it's open record and, and we're talking about.
Seventy-dollar seat.
All rate per container two fifty-nine on a flat rate through any precinct compared to three thirty-four, three thirty-three, three oh one.
You'd have to average on that.
Three thirty-three, three eighty-two, uh, precinct five barn. So, I mean, even, yeah.
And the haul rate.
Even, even if you, even if you add, you know, like I said, uh, one, we're still way, way below that.
Yeah, that's fine, but we gotta make sure that we're gonna have her container that she needs. You know, we, we can do that. At another, right? No?
Oh, one is here.
We have, we need to make sure we have sixteen contained.
Additional.
No, no, we, it's, it's still gonna be the same, the only time, it's when it says specially, uh, special.
Yes.
Special events or special delivery.
But it doesn't describe that here, this, here, it should have read for, uh, you know, additional container for special events. Because here, if you just read it as is, she can charge, they can grant, you know, can charge for any additional container, because that's, that's, that's the. And that's where I can.
That's the verbiage.
And that's where I can work it in, on the contract itself, like for, like if it's gonna be for like a special usage for, like you said, the livestock show, or if you're gonna have something like that, I can definitely include that in there, for, for those specific purposes, if, if you have that, that.
No, we gotta make sure that she's gonna have her six.
The ones that she's supposed to have, yeah.
Yeah, that are on the bid.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? The three and the three, that's my concern, to make sure, you know.
Absolutely, because that's what you requested, that would have to be on the contract.
I don't, we don't have any issues with that, I mean, you know that we have always worked with the county, oh, always. Uh, we never charged for any repairs, never charged for rental, never charged for any additional containers, I mean, you guys know that we will work on Sundays.
Well, well, when, when we figure out what we're gonna do, I'll have some comments after.
But, but, uh, yeah, so.
Whoever we pick, you know what I mean?
So, I don't think, I mean, we, just by looking at the raw numbers, which are written numbers, it, it's obviously, uh, a little bit, you know, over the top of that other, on that other side, and, and now I know I was confused and very easily confused. All that other company did was copy everything we did and add a number.
Yes.
That's why I'm like, you know, what's wrong with, but, uh, yeah, obviously, it's a it's a, it's a big savings to do that.
Yeah, that's what I see, as soon as I see the numbers. You're gonna calculate it to the end of the year, but.
Which I think we're spending upwards of
three hundred, four hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm, yeah, but we budgeted, uh, uh, for twenty-five. Obviously, it's gone up here, you know, throughout the year.
We will stay with it.
As everything, but, uh, well, and, and, and the thing about it is that we really, because tonnage comes into play, right? That's why I'm telling you, this is one that I have Melissa throughout the year. That's why I'm telling you, this is one that I have Melissa throughout the year, see how we're doing. Because on the, on the number of, of hauls, right, is one, one, but the other is tonnage. So, it, 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 you know what I'm saying?
Do we, on the, uh, request for, for, uh, qualifications or do we request for the prices?
Yeah, it's on there, that's what I'm getting at. And there's a difference.
That was the bid.
There's almost a twenty-dollar difference in tonnage, which is significant.
That's the bid as well.
Yeah.
We didn't put in we didn't put a minimum amount.
Randy has it.
They, they, they just copied.
Randy has it at, uh,
At thirty-nine?
At thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine fifty?
Per ton. Per ton and, and, and Republic has it at fifty-nine. That's what I'm saying is that, uh, it, it's, it's one of those that, uh, that you, you have to keep a close eye and, and I'll give you an example, like just for discussion purposes. Uh, when we touch the delicate issue of construction material, right? Uh, construction materials, we all know, gets heavy, right? Well, let's leave aside jingles because that's not accepted, right? But, uh, the conversation that we've had in, in the past is that, well, we accept construction material, but tonnage is gonna go way up, which is true, right? But needless to say, I think because of, and, and that's why I'm saying, that's why we're having this particular bid open amongst Commissioners' Courts because it affects the precincts directly in terms of, you know, the, 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 the way that they're maintained, right? And so, uh, uh, in my opinion, uh, the, the precincts play a vital role on control overall, and, and you know this, right? A precinct to the choir. And so, but numbers, tonnage, play a big role and yes, is right, we know that, service is vital. But, uh, needless to say, on, on, on the number figures, uh, I, I think that, uh, that, you know, that, that, that the, uh, the grandy bid is, is considered less than the, uh,
I don't think we asked for what I would like to have seen with overall price with an estimate of, you know, let's just say we did two hundred tons of trash. And then, then we'll know the comparison, you get what I'm saying? On both sides, we need, we can ask for that.
Well, I think that if you look at your, your bid sheet, if you look at, at, at the minimum qualifications, whether the project is within your budget constraints, that kinda answers the question on between whether it's fifty-nine dollars per tonnage and thirty-nine dollars per tonnage because you're looking at a difference of, like, you know, how much.
We already know how close the overall number is, so if you add this, it's gonna add that one, that, that's what I'm saying, add more or less on, let's just say twenty tons.
I mean, obviously, I mean, it's definitely, it's a difference between, I don't know how much, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head how many your budgets are, but you know. But you, because you still have to score. Yeah, you're still having to score.
So did, but we're also scoring different.
Because you're scoring for each, uh, for each applicant, for each bid, you know?
Yeah, I'm looking at numbers and I'm looking at, I mean, pretty simple to figure that out, but Terry told him. What, uh, how about, when can we make a comment of our, of our, uh, services ongoing right now?
That would go under work performance.
Well, that would be.
Qualifications, work performance on either one of them.
But I have to write it down, not.
Yeah, you can put that.
That or score it.
And score it, yeah.
Yeah, no, I scored it, but.
But you would include it, you would include it as part of your comments verbally or scoring it and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, when can I do it verbally?
Oh, at any time right now.
Okay.
At any time.
Yeah, uh, I, I actually, this past month, it was close to, yeah, this past year. I, you know, I would call, I would call and say, hey, because I've only got two containers. And I'm at the furthest, you know, two containers, I got some Perlita, I got all these rural areas over here that I mean, we gotta keep an eye, I don't have five containers, three containers, four containers, right? So I'm having to keep up, you know, especially after the holidays. And what, what, what upset me that I would be the guy calling and I would call and then I wouldn't get a, a call back. And then, uh, I got in a bind, one day, that was the last day I ever called the company. I let my foreman do it and I called and he, they told me, my, the truck is running late, but we will be there, I said, okay, I will be here until the truck gets here, because I'm gonna need it the next day. I, as a commissioner, sat there till five o'clock, nothing, okay, they're running late, six o'clock, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, no phone call, I finally locked the gate and I went home. I could've, I could've had a courtesy call and tell me, hey, we're not gonna make it. You know, uh, it, it was just disappointing to me, I told the foreman, you know what, you take care of it from now, I'm not gonna be calling. So, you know, that's, we, we should get a courtesy, get a courtesy call, you know? And I went several times like that, I said, you know what, I'm done, I'm done with that, I'm not gonna be in charge of that, so I had my foreman doing that. But that, I think that needs to get corrected. I don't know you guys, but the only reason I'm going to, I have only two containers. And wanna make sure my constituents have a, have a case to throw away the trash, you know? I know it's gonna get back the, but at least give me a call. But I waited there all afternoon, three o'clock at night. I don't think those things should happen, that's just me.
Well, I only have two containers in, in precinct five. I had three up until a couple of the beginning of this year. And the reason I was given was because the county didn't increase the pay rate by twenty dollars. And that's verbatim. So, you know, I did, you know, explain to her that I don't think that La Sara should have been penalized for what the county is in charge of. I'm part of the county, but I'm not the county, and so I don't think, um, you know, I should have, you know, La Sara should have, uh, taken the heat for that and I would use that's good business. I think that's immature. You have an issue with the county, write a letter to the county.
Uh, I, you know, I could say that, um, I, I kinda had the same situation. Uh, however, in the last probably year, I can't complain about this. I mean, they, you know, answer my calls, they, uh, switch dumpsters as needed. When, when, you know, being the heart of, uh, what is he?
The business.
I, I, everybody comes in, we squash them down, but whatever, we, we don't turn anybody away. Uh, and they have to be coming and going, coming and going quite a bit in my area and, uh, at first I was always getting overflowed and, and things like that, we added a dumpster and, and now we work together to where, hey, every two days, three days, you know, we'll call you, they come. Uh, but I will agree, the first, you know, it was, it was, it was hectic, then we finally worked it out. I, I don't have a complaint at this point. And in fact, I've called, uh, and I needed, hey, I need this dumpster that I set, set up part of my budget for other projects, whatever. They, they bring it right away, they pick it up and they, they hold it off as needed. Uh, and I think that, that was the one oh-five charge, um, that they're, they're looking at and, and, but I mean, that's my experience.
Well, I have, I really don't have the most containers, I think your precincts or did. Um, sometimes we get a little bit over, over, over wrought with, with trash, uh, and sometimes they don't answer, but they've gotten a little bit better about that, I think that's all it is, a communication issue, which is what it normally is. And then sometimes trucks break down and stuff like that. As long as somebody answers, I think we're, I think we're being, you know, pretty in shape on that. Yeah, it is a significant, uh, you know, savings. It is, but there's some other things that I'm thinking, you know, but that's not a part of this. You know, looking at the prices and when it broke down, I, I'd never seen that. Uh, I think what happened was it was a, a, probably a copy and paste of the, the whole contract or whatever. And, um, you know, I've scored mine, I probably scored a little different, but, you know, obviously we're looking at cost.
Yeah.
And service. But the cost is, I think we do over budgeted it.
Yeah, and, but obviously, bu- budget plays a, a big role on, on, on everything. My experience is, is we're talking a bit, unfortunately, uh, my experience goes back a long ways and, uh, I can attest that, uh, and this was during crisis time, which we've had several weather events. And as you all know, weather events kind of brings you to a different level of urgency. And, uh, and we've had this particular, uh, company, uh, Valley Waste, what I think was called back then. And, uh, I, I can remember them coming on Sunday and as a matter of fact, uh, it was Mr., I forget your last name.
You know?
Was driving the truck. And, and Valina was with him on a Sunday because I asked for help. I was drowning over there. So, I mean, there's things like that that, that touch, uh, the urgency part, right? Not to say that, not in any way saying that service, uh, is good. But, uh, I have experienced that in the past. Now, having said that, uh, I, I will tell you that, uh, and, and I say this because it's, it's something that's essential, uh, for us selecting, is Republic uh, also has played a role in emergency situations where they actually pick up brush because they have the equipment in crisis, right? And obviously that's once in a while, so I'm not in any way, uh, uh, I haven't worked with them that much. But needless to say, I think that, and I, and I'm gonna bring it, I'm gonna bring it all together. I think that, uh, because we have companies like this, Republic as well. And I don't know what other competitors are out there, right? But, uh, I'm glad that as a region, and, and as you all know, through the Development Council, we work with Republic for the tires, right? Uh, but as a region is that, uh, I'm glad that we not only have just one, but several uh, companies that we get to select from, I think that's a big plus.
Obviously.
And, and we see that, uh, here now and we see it, uh, in the, uh, in, in other organizations as, as well. So, but the, the number is, is very significant here for the, the cost. So, having said that, uh, that's it, Mr. Nada, I wanna make sure we stay within, excuse me, the guideline. So we can just basically, uh, vote or do we need to present some kind of, uh?
Well, you have to, yeah, submit your, your scoring sheets.
Alright.
I don't know if there's still any other comments on it.
The total points, it looks like that you can score, am I right? It's ninety, because it's fifty, twenty-five and fifteen, so up to ninety? Seventy-five? It's a, it's a total of up to ninety that can be scored on it. No more than that.
Everyone should carry it and then whoever's facility, like, judge.
Set up the top. Do this one? Bring. Okay. We can get front toe.
I'm actually, it's four is ninety, right?
Yes. Yes. Okay, let me, I'm gonna write out the motion.
Okay.
Whoever makes the motion.
Correct.
And then, uh, Lizzy will need a copy of that, so that way she can put it in.
Okay, so, uh. Jessica had stipulated, and so, uh, for Republic Services. Uh, total amount of, uh, points is two eight-five, two eight-five. Uh, Grande Dumpsters is three seventy-five. No, they didn't need to break down anything other than that. Can I entertain a motion?
So move to approve judge.
Second.
Because we need to.
Uh, move to select a bid received by Grande Dumpsters for the contract for solid waste transfer containers. And authorize the county judge to negotiate contract with legal approval. That's my.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Tejera.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alisa Morano, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, and, uh, okay. Let me go, let me go back, this is line item number seven, you're right? Discussion action to select an award. Okay, so that's gonna be the case, then.
Yes.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion here. Okay, so, can I entertain a motion to the juror?
Say again.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejera, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion here.